To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and just as for all.
Absolutely. Frost.
Here.
No, here. Ben Joseph.
Here.
So.
Here.
Of course, then.
Here.
Moon's here. Tyre.
Here.
Oh, we're all here tonight.
We have any correspondence?
None. I have none.
Okay.
None?
None. All right. I should, what was this from?
Thank you. All right, so. Let's get out here. All right, the December meeting, we're into the thick of it if you will, from the students' perspective. We are full-fledged ahead with finals, but it's been really, really cool. It's been really fun. The faculty had a big bingo event today, and so the sense of community is just at the fullest extent. We're really ready for the holiday season. So, real quick, for community, we just finished our Give-A-Thon event, and so I have the statistics that I wanted to read out. We served nearly three hundred and fifty families in need. We spread joy to thirteen hundred children. We donated over seventy bikes to children. The advisory, the freshman advisory, has collected over fifteen hundred boxes of mac and cheese. We delivered over two hundred boxes of different types of food, and we provided sixty-five plus boxes of diapers and wipes. And so, a really great turnout for Give-A-Thon, tons of tremendous amounts of greatness from all our students, from raising all that money and getting all these gifts. A great way to give back to the Stevenson community and those who are less fortunate in these times in need.
Who's that guy?
That guy is me. So, I wanted to put that in there. We presented our annual Speak-Up training to all of our freshmen the day before we went on Thanksgiving break, and so I put that in there because FIRE is really proud of giving this presentation annually. It really allows our freshmen to come together, learn about different norms and how to engage with one another in a civil manner, and tackle issues when they arise, and really work on resolution amongst peers without having to deal with it in a more adverse way. And so it was just great to bring all the faculty and all the students that teach freshmen together and just set those norms straight out right before Thanksgiving. So, we really enjoyed that. A little bit lighter on career this past month. On the top left, our model United Nations team traveled to Brown University. So, they left the state and traveled at a national competition with many several individual award winners, being able to do what a mock United Nations is like in the national circuit. So, that was extremely, extremely exciting for them. On the top right, our creative writing students who attend creative writing and take the class attended in the annual Creative Writing Festival at the UW-White Waters campus, and so, you know, they look forward to that annually, to put that on. They're really passionate about creative writing, and they get to be with other like-minded students from all around the country. On the bottom left, the Chicagoland Winter History BN Bowl was hosted at the Carl Sandburg High School. Three of our varsity teams all made it to the semifinals, so impeccable job for them.
Wow.
On the bottom right, for an academic field trip, the investment management classes traveled to the Windy City. Were able to visit the Chicago Board of Trade and the Chicago Federal Reserve. And so, as I told you a couple of months ago, more experiential learning, getting out of the classroom, getting into the community, learning, and being able to connect what they're learning in the classroom to what happens in real life. So, impeccable for them. So, you may remember that last month, we focused a lot on career and community building, and so this month, sort of with the holidays coming around, I really wanted to shed a huge amount of light on fine arts and all of the fine arts activities that have been going on. There's pretty much been a concert or some fine arts-related event almost every single day for the past like two, three weeks, ever since we got back from break. And so, tremendous amount of credit to these students who are able to balance their course loads. We have finals coming up and memorize all their lines and their scripts and everything that they do to put on these musicals. On the top left, our failed presidential candidates improv troupe was able to have their first demonstration, and so that's complete improv. They make it up along the spot, and so, credit to them. On the top right, we had the winter dance concert, and so different types of dance from all the different dance classes here at Stevenson came together to put on their performance and show off what they've been working on all semester long. On the bottom right, the prom musical was hosted for three nights over the course of November. This was actually a really nice community aspect to them, as this was, the consortium students came to Stevenson during one of the late arrivals day, and were able to see the prom be put on. And so, the prom deals with many heavy-hitting topics that are plaguing our society, and so, the number one thing that I was hearing from both the theater director as well as the consortium was that middle school students were able to understand what was going on and the topics behind this. And so, it's really nice that our students were able to express themselves in that manner across a wide variety of audiences. On the bottom right, our thirty-nine student musicians participated in the Illinois Music Education Association Senior Festival on Saturday. Continuing off of that, there's just been so much fine arts. On the bottom left, we had a guitar concert a couple of weeks ago. There was another orchestra concert. On the bottom right, our music production classes actually put on a showcase. And so, music production is a course here at Stevenson, and so everybody was able to take what they'd been practicing and developing in that class and put it on for the greater Stevenson community to see. And then on the top right, our art classes held their annual Winter Art Fest. So, that's where every single art student who's enrolled in an art class here at Stevenson is able to showcase one piece of artwork that they've created over the semester. And so, this entire slide, I wanted to showcase, every one of these involve Stevenson's classes being able to perform for the Stevenson community. So, when you look at that, right, the students who take these courses, they're deeply passionate about fine arts, right? Fine arts, we don't have a requirement per se for them, but these are students that aren't just taking guitar or aren't just taking, you know, acting, just to take acting. They're taking it because they're passionate about it, and so, we're incredibly grateful to have such amazing spaces and great programs. Thank you for that, that our students are able to express their passions in a way like none other. And every performance that is put on, you hear it from community members all the time that it feels like a professional Chicago Symphony, right? Like, it's so professional. You wouldn't expect that in a high school setting, and yet we crank these productions out almost daily through the month of December. So, we thank you for that. Athletics was a little bit light this past month. We did the transition between fall sports to winter sports, and so, a lot of teams have done their tryouts or just getting going. The one thing that I wanted to highlight was that the boys' basketball team, through student council and through senior class board, hosted a senior tip-off event for all of us seniors, and so, that was continuing off of the senior kickoff event, which was run when the football team had their first game, and that was just a really nice way for all of us as seniors to come together. I know we've talked in the past about how we're celebrating a lot of our lasts. This was a nice way for us as seniors just to come together, be together, watch a basketball game, and just look back on the many basketball games that we've been able to enjoy over the past three and a half, four years. So, for this month, for the statesman, like I said, the prom was a really big musical that was very eventful throughout the month of November and took up a lot of the planning and whatnot, and so, the statesman actually did a news article surrounding a little bit about the behind-the-scenes of what it takes to put on like a three-night-straight production and balancing that with the workload. And so, that story has a lot of different perspectives from the students who are in leadership positions and the students who are just acting, maybe freshmen or sophomores, as well as their sponsors. And so, that should give you a little bit more insight as to the behind-the-scenes of what it takes to prep such a professional performance. So, coming up, it's a little bit light looking forward. Obviously, we've got the big winter break, and then we've got another orchestra concert. Tomorrow, I think that'll be the last one for the end of the semester. I was talking to some of their students, they're like, "We want to get through this because we've got finals in two days," and so, they've just, a lot of them have had a lot of sleepless nights, balancing, memorizing their lines, and being able to prep for finals, so credit to them. And then the next three events all have to do with looking forward and looking towards the next class of Stevenson students and the incoming freshmen. We have our family nights. We have a consortium jazz band festival where all the middle school students who are involved in jazz band will get to come and see what the Stevenson band is like, and the same for orchestra students at the middle school. And so, next month's presentation will really focus on what Stevenson does looking forward and how we begin that transition process by eight or nine months before the start of the school year, just to make this next group of Stevenson students have a place to call. So, with that, I want to wish you all a happy winter break and a happy holiday season. Really thankful for everything that you all do for the Stevenson community. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any visitor statements?
Okay, well, thank you, and we begin tonight with some ambassador awards, which are super exciting. And tonight, we have the opportunity to recognize some students who've done some amazing work academically, so, Mr. Goble.
Yeah.
Would you like to take it away?
Yeah. Hi, everybody. Great to see you all. We are always thrilled to get to celebrate with our ambassador award winners. Grace is going to come forward and help us out here, passing out these awards. The ambassador award is the highest award you can win at Stevenson High School, and the board is recognizing excellence in either scholarship, athletics, activities, and so, this is an incredible award and something you should be really proud of. Today, we are celebrating three students who all earned a perfect score on the ACT. So, that's a perfect thirty-six. There are four sections on the ACT. It's an incredibly rare occurrence, and for us to have three in one time period is pretty spectacular. Congratulations to those of you that are here. I'm going to call you up one at a time. If you come up and get your award, we'll have you shake hands with Grace. We'll take some pictures. And then, I'm going to call Helen up first in a minute. Will Helen just stay over here on the side? And then, we'll bring Isabella up, and then, we're going to do some group pictures, and then I bet the board has a couple of questions. So, you're on the hook for some questions, so hopefully, there might be some geometry or something. So, first up today, we are really proud to celebrate with Helen Deng. Please come forward.
She's my goddaughter.
They might know each other.
One, two, three.
Congratulations.
So much.
And second today, we have Isabella Wong. And we have a third student who I don't see, but is Kevin Young here? Yeah, and so Kevin Young also received this incredible honor. So, now if we have the three of you get together, we'll take one group shot. Go ahead, please get in there. We'll get everybody. Yeah, parents first, always. All right, if you thought the ACT was hard, wait till you get a load of this. If you guys could just turn around and meet the board, I bet they have a question or three to ask you about your experience.
So, was this your first take?
For me, it was. I took it in September. Yeah, first ACT, then ASL, but I've taken the SAT.
Wow, that's impressive. So, you're going to take it again?
Just the one in April.
You have to take that one.
I have to take it again.
Yeah, they do have to take it in April.
Oh, my God.
It's breakable?
Sorry, sorry.
So, a serious question. How did you feel about it when you walked in and you took it? When you left, did you feel it when you were comfortable with it? Was it curious what it's, I've never experienced what you did.
Did you know how well you did?
Well, I was preparing for the ACT. I took a lot of like practice exams, so I was like hoping for a good score, and I kind of knew that I would probably do like pretty well, but I wasn't expecting to do like as well as I do.
Perfection.
Yeah.
Um, I think I was definitely nervous, like walking out, not seeing the score. You never really know like how it's going to end up, like how it curves, or maybe like if you missed a question. So, I kind of walked out feeling a bit nervous, but I was really happy when I saw this one.
Well, we're very proud of you. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
So, we will pause and give you the opportunity to, you're welcome to stay for the meeting, but this may have been the best part. Yeah.
It definitely was.
Yeah, so, thank you. Congratulations. You're very welcome.
Thank you.
Bye. Congratulations. And like, I was worried about whether I got one wrong or not. Did I get one right? Like, there's a very, like, new, very different experiences walking out of the test.
So, I hope that you're not offended. This is the second-best part of the meeting. I know, I saw Abby like, "Wait a minute." So, the second-best part of the meeting is always our curriculum team presentation. So, the past couple of years, we've been focused on our work around SEL. So, Abby, I'm going to let you introduce the members of your team who are here and are going to share with us their work.
All right. Thank you for having us. My name's Abby Austin. I am the manager of physical welfare. And presenting today is the awesome, dynamic duo of the Applied Health Team, Ross Parchatsky and Jill Littman. Typically, this, well, this class isn't elective in our division, and typically, it is taken by students who are interested in the medical field or some sort of career in health.
Cool. Hi, everybody. I'm Jill Littman. This is my twenty-fourth year at Stevenson, tenth year teaching applied health. It's a really, really awesome class. I co-sponsor HOSA. Wish we see you online. Since we have a couple of kids in HOSA. We will. We only have three hundred and sixty-three members this year, so, and I'm also a student council.
It's bigger than my high school.
I'm Ross Parchatsky. This is my third year here at Stevenson. I teach choice B health and applied health, and I actually have a applied health student sitting next to me. And I'm our boys' sophomore basketball coach, as well as a HOSA sponsor. So, I'll just give you a little background of kind of what our class looks like. As Abby kind of alluded to, our class focuses on getting our students ready for careers in healthcare. So, we try to give them some skills that they can use, obviously, in healthcare, but give them a picture of what that kind of looks like. So, to do that, these are the skills that we teach our kids and assess our kids on. The very first one is professional rescue, so this is really focusing on like CPR. So, we have an unresponsive victim. What are we going to do in this situation? So, the students get a C-PRO certification through the American Red Cross, and we do that through this skill. So, they get a few different scenarios. So, they work as a single responder. How do we work when there's two people involved? How do we work when there's three people and four people who are all involved in the rescue? As well as, what do we do when it's an adult? What do we do when it's a child? What do we do when it's an infant? And so, it's a very, very hands-on, right from the get-go when they're in our class. We also have the injury management skill, and you can see listed below, these are all the certifications that our students get through the American Red Cross after taking our class. So, they get a first aid certification. They learn what to do with anaphylaxis and how to administer an EpiPen. They get a bloodborne pathogens training, yeah, how to assist someone who's having an asthma emergency, and first aid for severe trauma. So, they're learning how to control bleeding and how to control life-threatening bleeding. Our other two skills would be the anatomy and term skill. So, if they're going to be in healthcare, they need to start learning some anatomy, and they need to know some terminology that goes along with that. So, they learn like anatomical positioning terms. They learn biomechanical movement terms. They learn skeletal anatomy to help them get a grasp of what's going on with all of these different injuries. And our last skill is the communication skill. So, this is focusing on how do we communicate with each other when we're all in a panic and there's an emergency that's going on? And how do we talk to the freaked-out family members who are around, and how do we explain to the patient what's going on with them without scaring them? And so, that communication skill is really kind of a big one that we are focusing on now. So, this gives you a quick rundown of what our class demographics look like. So, just first semester, Jill is the only one who teaches applied health, so she has three sections. Second semester, I teach as well, and there's nine sections in the spring. So, we looked at the spring data from last year, so you can see it's a pretty female-heavy class, but we still have a pretty wide variety of cultures in our classroom. So, if we look at our SVS data, you know, we're pretty proud of the climate that we've built in our classes and the connections that we have with our students, and one of the areas that we really wanted to focus on was this valuing of subjects. So, this next stat is kind of crazy. How useful do you think this class will be in the future? Ninety-nine percent of our kids said it's absolutely going to be useful, so they're thinking, "I'm going to be in healthcare. I should probably know how to do CPR. I should know how to treat injuries." But, another part of this, you know, it's not all perfect, is only sixty-one percent said that they're going to use these ideas from class in their daily life, and so, we were kind of thinking about, you know, why that is, and, you know, a lot of them say, "Well, I'm not doing CPR in my day-to-day. I'm not stopping life-threatening bleeding on my day-to-day." But, we were kind of thinking like, you know, there's other things in class that they could be picking up on, that they could be using in their day-to-day. And that's where the communication skill came in, so trying to make some adjustments to this, so that it's not just focused on emergency situations and talking to patients. It's also, how can these skills be used to talk to your parents, or talk to a coach, or talk to a teacher? So, we thought it fit in pretty nicely with the areas here that we have at school, especially the commitment to others and under SEL, looking at relationship skills and social awareness, that we could bring in some ideas with this communication skill. And so, one of these would be to think about, how do we communicate with diverse populations, and how do we show empathy for others? And then, as healthcare providers, this is going to be important too, and we'll share a couple of examples of ways that we have done that this year and going forward.
So, then, when Ross and I were meeting at the beginning of the school year, trying to figure out how we're going to use this, we really wanted to expand that communication skill, because it's not just that emergency, but like, how do we change what we're saying? And how do we change that tone? And so, we wanted to start addressing that skill right at the get-go, at the beginning of the semester, providing more examples in healthcare and in our own lives, giving some more connections with that. And then, our big goal is, we really wanted to include some more lessons in communication with diverse populations and helping kids see some of those disparities in healthcare, so that, since they're the future of our healthcare, maybe they can bridge that gap for us. So, right from the very beginning, day two, we started opening up those, what does it mean to communicate clearly? And setting that expectation of talking and listening, and right from, whether it's just talking to a classmate in class, but then also, as we're moving on, talking to a patient. How do you talk to another healthcare provider? Started it from the very beginning, instead of waiting a little bit later on when we were focusing on healthcare. We've always done like a Fun Friday. We've always done like a Fun Friday challenge. We always put kids in the marshmallow challenge or they've gotta take a tarp and work together and try to figure out how to flip it over together. And we really were focused, we always focused at the end of our Fun Friday challenges. It wasn't just a fun thing, but okay, let's debrief it. How could we use this in healthcare and how can we use this in class? And we were, as we were looking through ones, we wanted to make sure we were including ones that were specifically challenging them with their communication and leading to really good debriefs about how they were using their communication skills with their classmates. And some of them were big challenges and some of them were small and something as little as putting, you know, they had a cartoon character on their back and they had to figure out who they were with asking yes/no questions. And it was a fun way to put them with new partners, but then again, it always came back to that debrief. What was it like when people only gave you yes/no answers? And, you know, thinking about how do we communicate better and bringing it back to real life? Like, does that sound like, hey, how was your day today? Fine. What'd you do? Nothing. Like, how do you think your parents feel when you're having one-word conversations? And then we're bringing that all back to them. Okay, you get a little bit more of that clear picture when you talk and give sentences and helping them kind of bridge that gap, not just in class, but with their parents. And so when we started initially with our skills, we started with life-threatening bleeding and doing all sorts of different rescues, really embedded in, um, emergency management is closed-loop communication. That idea that you need to repeat back that message. And we start with this at the very beginning, but then giving them real-life situations. Like, okay, have you ever had that situation where your parent keeps repeating themselves over and over and over and over and over again? They're like, if you were to just close the loop and say, Mom, I heard ya, I'll take the trash out when I'm done, they'll stop repeating themselves. They're like, okay, I can see that. So giving them the connections between what we're doing in class and, 'cause we practice and we assess their ability to close the loop during a rescue, but then making some connections and how they can use that at home. So our students do a really nice job. As Ross explained, they do multi, or partner, uh, partner rescues and they do a lot of peer feedback with each other, which takes a lot of good, clear communication. Does that sound like your class? Yeah. Um, and then we also like communication's not just what we say, but we also have to address the emotion in situations. And we give them examples of, you know, Grey's Anatomy is, there's always an example from Grey's Anatomy. So here's some really bad communication with Grey's Anatomy, looking at the emotion and how we hit the situation. Then, okay, how would you do differently? How would we address not just what you say, but how you say it and how we address the, the patient and give them opportunities with that? And what we're really proud about is we've been talking about different ways to bring in some of that equity, race, and diversity work, as there's a lot of disparities in healthcare. And with, um, patients feeling misunderstood and not getting the best treatment because they're misunderstood because of their cultural differences. So we brought in some video clips of people talking about their experiences. If I could speak to a healthcare worker, this is what I would recommend and giving them statistics on disparities in healthcare from different groups. And then we had a conversation about how do we make our patients feel more comfortable with their care and looking at that importance of cultural competence, empathy, and active listening. And really emphasizing that idea of cultural competence leads to improved patient satisfaction and purposely giving time and space for kids to think about after we're practicing a skill and teaching, we're learning a new topic, how would you teach this to, uh, your patient? Giving them that moment, okay, how would I, um, how would I focus or adjust my communication to make all of my patients feel comfortable? We were teaching them. They were learning about, um, how to teach somebody how to use an EpiPen. Okay, well, what if your person didn't speak the same language as you? How would you adjust that? And trying to be purposeful with giving different reflection opportunities for students to really think about different ways our communication could be used. So just a couple of weeks ago, gave our students a follow-up survey of like, okay, so how are you using this now purposely in our class? How do you feel it's helping you improve your communication in your life? Seventy-seven percent saying most definitely. The six percent with their little follow-up questions, some of them was a no because they felt that they were already really strong in the skill. So, um, that was some of that in there, but a lot of them were really starting to see those connections. You know, some of them, I'm able to communicate while teaching younger children. Help me clear and direct. Help me connect with my peers in classes. Help me with my relationships. How to keep patients calm. And my all-time favorite, help me remember that my mom is nagging me, I just need to close the loop. And just on Friday, we had our, like, um, end of semester mass casualty day. They walk in the aerobics room and there's, we say, there's a stage collapse. We're all at a concert and there's places, people everywhere and our officers come in and help us out with this. And they had a great opportunity to really communicate. Where they really truly were able to coordinate and communicate and they were triaging who should go next and getting their victims on spine boards and working on their rescues together. Working as a whole class in this mass chaos, coordinating the spine board and working in multi-person rescue.
All right, uh, yeah, so, uh, going forward, just keep, kind of thinking about what some of the things that we wanted to keep doing with this would be just more lessons, you know, that, uh, different ways that we could bring in that diverse population, um, uh, type, type of questioning. So like the example with, uh, what, what if it's a different language? Well, you know, we could keep building on that for sure. And then adding the, the moments there for like, you know, the explicit moments for reflecting on, well, how else besides healthcare, our classroom, where else in your life could these opportunities, um, be good for you, all right? Where could you see these have, um, filling a void for you in your day-to-day life? And so hopefully, um, you know, if we can keep working on that, you know, we look at that question again, hopefully it'll move up from 66% where kids are like, oh yeah, I am using this in, in my day-to-day. You know, and kind of getting your mindset shifted away from just the, uh, the CPR and the, the life-threatening bleeding and those types of things.
Questions, good answer.
Well, actually, just a quick comment. So your presentation reminded me to take a CRP class. At my workplace, they offer it every year, so I missed a chance, but I'm gonna take it next year, so.
I'm curious what the response is to that mesh casual casualty day. Is it, are they excited? Are they, is it scary? Like, how do they?
It's a big mix, 'cause a lot of kids, they know about it. They're like, oh, I totally know it's coming. And until they walk into that room, you don't really know how you're gonna respond. And we debrief it afterwards. Like, you don't know how you're gonna respond and however you respond is totally okay. And like, getting that emotion out. Um, how do you respond to it?
Yeah, I took it, I took this back a couple of semesters ago and I still remember it now, like almost a year later. I'm like, yeah, it's, and it's all just in that one big room too, doing it, yeah. And there's noises and, it's really, it's realistic. It's nice.
So there are a lot of kids that, yeah.
Yeah, there's, there's definitely leaders who are like, I'm in there, I'm hands-on, you know? There's people who are kind of like, you know, off to the side, but that's, you know, that's real life. And I think, you know, we have our officers who come in too and they, they give like some real-life examples of, of what they've seen and, you know, it's pretty impactful for our kids.
Yeah, I think it's great.
I don't, I don't have a question, but I just went, I, this is really good. It's very impressive.
It's a really fun class to teach. Yeah, for sure.
It's a lot of fun.
Now make sure, keep us updated for the 61%, like, you know, the feedback, right? I wanna know why it's only 61%. It should be 100%, right? It's very useful.
All right.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You too. Take care.
I think, shoot that.
No. No, 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 got it. Okay, so, uh, next item is approval of an update to, uh, actually, we have two items, our board policy updates. The first we're at a scheme for, we're making a recommendation for action tonight. The second is the first reading. But over the course of the last few weeks and in our finance committee the last week, we've discussed updating our fund balance policy, um, to better serve the district and provide the community with more accurate reflection of our financial health. It also aligns more closely with, uh, school code recommendations and clarifies kind of our actual current financial position. So, tonight, we're gonna make a recommendation that the Board of Education approve a revised and updated school board policy for colon 2O as presented.
Any, we did talk about this last Tuesday at the, the meeting. Um, any other questions for Sean on this one?
I know I was out of town. Did you get a chance to just confirm with Liz?
Yep.
Or Jess, or our accountants and our finance people. That's correct. Thank you.
Any other questions? Terry, could you please pull the board? Pardon me, could you please pull the board?
Oh, of course. No.
Aye.
Ben Yosef.
Aye.
Sal.
Aye.
Gerson.
Aye.
Wounds. Aye. Tyre.
Aye.
Frost.
Aye.
Kerry's seven to nothing.
Okay, and then as a first reading tonight, uh, we're presenting, um, board policy updates from press issue 117. So, uh, we'll give you a chance to, uh, look over those. Many of them were kind of wordsmithing, Pia.
There are a few on there that we do want the board to take a look at.
But there are a few on there that we would like the board to take a look at.
There's new board member training that starts July 1st. And so we do just want to make sure that you, uh, see that. That will come out through IASB. Um, we'll have that package all ready for, for all the board members.
Yeah, so it'll start July 1st in, to next year. We'll have to do it for next year.
Correct.
Yeah.
So for any new board members, it will, um, already be part of the onboarding package. Then there's another board policy eight colon 10, um, and that's the connection with community. Again, we just want the board to review as well. And we've indicated that on the side there.
Yep, and then the other policy is around, um, the college and career pathways. And Wendy has, this is actually something Wendy ironically enough has been working on over the course of the last few years. So you want to give the board just a quick.
Yep, um, and I have just a quick PowerPoint. We actually had a board dialogue last year that talked a little bit about the new career pathways, um, kind of state, um, things. And we have two courses that we have submitted to the state currently, um, ready for review. Spoke to, um, the person in charge of it last week. We have one on hospitality and tourism. And then we have another one on emergency medical service. And those are the two courses. Our, we have to have a third one, but not to like 2030, I think, something like that. So it's a ways off, so we're not too worried about that one. And this is just a special thanks to the College of Lake County, 'cause we're doing this in conjunction with, um, our, our articulation and our work with the College of Lake County Technology Campus, um, for those students. So our hope is our students that are gonna go there are gonna get some benefits from these career pathway endorsements.
Awesome. Um, okay, any questions about this? Want to come on that? Okay, uh, we have our usual, um, kind of buffet of personnel items that are included in the human resources report. We will not need an executive action.
Too bad.
Following, uh, the meeting, um, and that brings us to Sean, our business section.
Correct. Um, if you recall, at, um, our December, uh, finance committee, as well as previously, uh, previous committee meetings as well, we are looking to, um, rearrange some of our long-term debt and long-term investments. So tonight, we are, uh, asking the board, um, to approve a resolution that will basically, um, lower, um, or excuse me, lower our amount of long-term investments, keep our debt the same, um, and the way, in essence, we're refinancing some of our debt. But the way in which it's worded, we have to follow specific guidelines. So that's why the resolution looks this way. It's not a, a refinance, it's an issuance and then a defeasance. Um, and the defeasance will come after, after the issuance. So tonight, we are recommending that the Board of Education approve the resolution, declaring the intention to issue not to and exceed $15 million in working cash fund bonds for the purpose of increasing the working cash fund of the district and directing the notice of such intention to be published in the manner provided by, by law.
Can I get a motion to approve?
Second.
So again, we've talked about this now a couple of finance committee meetings. Does anybody, we're not approving it tonight. We're setting our intention for next month, but does anybody have any questions on this in the meantime for Sean? Okay, Terry, could you please pull?
Ben Yosef.
Aye.
Sal.
Aye.
Gerson.
Aye.
Wounds. Aye. Tyre.
Aye.
Frost.
Aye.
No.
Aye.
There's approved.
Thank you. The other part, um, that goes along with this is, uh, the setting of a public hearing. So our next board meeting is, uh, January 13th of 2025. Um, so we are asking the board, um, uh, to set a public hearing for January 13th, 2025 for public discussion.
Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Questions? Okay, Terry, could you please pull?
Aye, yes. Sal.
Aye.
Gerson.
Aye.
Wounds. Aye. Tyre.
Aye.
Frost. No.
Aye.
Ben Yosef.
Aye.
Okay. Kerry's.
Thank you. Next item I have tonight is the annual tax levy. We had a first reading, uh, back in November. Uh, tonight, we're asking the board to certify that with an approval. This is probably one of the most important parts of my job, um, to ensure that, uh, the county knows how much revenue we need to cover the costs for the 25, 26 school year. I know that seems a little odd since we haven't set the budget for the 25, 26 school year. That's just how this process happens. So tonight, uh, you know, we, as we talked about before, we do wanna set our tax levy at $126,800,000 even. However, because of the property tax extension limitation law, we expect that to decrease to about $125,500,000 roughly, um, which would be, uh, a little bit more than 3% increase from this year to next year. So tonight, um, we are recommending that the Board of Education approve the 2024 tax levy in the amount of $126,800,000.
Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Who was that?
Steve.
Steve. Thank you, Steve.
Sure.
Second.
Good. I know you are.
Again, we covered this on Tuesday, but any additional questions?
No, and I, I did just wanna mention that we, I know we've talked about it. There isn't, there wasn't a need for truth and taxation hearing because our, um, request was less than 5%.
Okay, could you please pull?
Gerson.
Aye.
Wounds. Aye. Tyre.
Aye.
Frost.
Aye.
No.
Aye.
Ben Yosef.
Aye.
Sal.
Aye.
Kerry's. Go for it.
Thank you. I'll be delivering the tax levy tomorrow to the, uh, county to make sure that I'll get the receipt.
With two hands.
Two hands, most definitely.
Multiple copies. There's actually. Logical over the desk.
There's gonna be copies on my desk in case I get, you know, something happens on the way to the county, so that we can get that taken care of.
Bring them mud cakes.
I usually, I usually bring chocolates. Um, chocolates or popcorn, it depends on the day. No, 'cause they, they do a tremendous job and they actually do provide us with the, um, estimates that, that we need to really zoom in and zero in on how much we, um, need for that next year. It helps us tremendously. Um, the last item I have then for tonight is also an approval. Um, we brought this to the board in November as well. As you know, we have several multi-function devices around the school, including in our print shop, where we have quite a large, um, set of high-capacity, almost, not almost, production-level machines to help us manage the need for, um, copying things. Believe it or not, there is still a significant need for copying things. Um, with our vendor from Canon, um, we were able to work out, uh, the replacement of two machines, um, with no increase, um, to our, uh, monthly cost. In fact, um, we even got a lower click charge, if you will, than what, um, has been presented tonight. It's actually, uh, two cents instead of four cents. Um, so we're continuing to do that. This is something that we are going to, um, try to accomplish in the near future without disrupting any of the, um, needs of our faculty, um, as it relates to copying services. So tonight, we are recommending that the Board of Education approve the replacement of the multi-function devices as presented.
Yeah, please get a motion.
So moved.
Zeb.
Me.
Rodney. Second?
Sure, second.
So these are in the building?
So these are in the building?
These are already in the building, they're quite large machines, like twenty feet long. I mean, they're full production machines. They produce over a million copies, well over a million copies. They feed this up, that's.
A million copies per month, I believe.
Is that right or is that a year? No, the other ones are the year.
Annually, it's the other copies, I think that they probably do about a millionish.
Yeah, about a millionish year between the black and white and color. What is, it's fascinating and what's interesting is that these, we can allow these, we can feed these machines and allow them to run all night. And we have our print center crew, they just add new paper to it in the middle of the night. And as long as it has the paper, it keeps running. So high production, high value, great, great value to the district because we can continue to keep those costs with newer technologies.
And we're not running small machines in every department.
We're running smaller machines in the departments, but we're continuing to drive and ask that we put more emphasis on the copy center because we have the ability to do that. Right now, we're pretty much at our maximum capacity because this machine's newer, a little faster. It can actually increase our production and take off some of the need on those arterial machines that are throughout our building. Pia and I have been working and continue to work on methods to decrease overall from the district, the amount of copying that goes on. But that doesn't affect these machines that are getting replaced today or that we're asking for replacement today.
I just want to mark the call in these big things.
Was the the number of machines in the office, yeah.
And the amount of copying we were doing.
Yeah. And and there's a significant cost savings to running it through the print center as opposed to running it on a multi-function device in an office and definitely compared to a traditional printer. But we still have them as backups if we need.
Okay, great. Terry, could you please pull?
We need, we need to pull the board.
Yeah.
Ready?
Yep.
Oh, good, Moons, aye, okay, Tyer.
Aye.
Frost.
Aye.
No.
Aye.
Ben Yosef.
Aye.
Sal.
Aye.
Gerson.
Aye.
Kerry's.
Okay, you see a couple of FOIA requests and that takes us to consent.
And then, could I please get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Terry, could you please pull? There's other ones.
I'm not hearing very well tonight.
Could you please pull?
Sir, for the Tyer.
Aye.
Frost.
Aye.
No.
Aye.
Ben Yosef.
Aye.
Sal.
Aye.
Gerson.
Aye.
Moons, aye. Kerry's.
Okay, so finally this evening, a couple of items in the information report. We have thanks to Pia and Jamie, a couple items that you may not have seen in the Daily Digest. The students math, Stevenson math team adds up to fun at the twenty twenty-four math carnival. So a hundred students engaged in that work. The Latin club won a competition and students helping soldiers did a drive and you can see all those things there. So again, we try to highlight just each month, a couple of things. If you're not a regular Daily Digest reader, there's just amazing things that our kids are doing every day in there, Jamie, that your team highlights. So here are a few of those. You can see an update from the E L C. And then also due to some of the conversations we're having in the fall around our G P I's. Wendy has put together kind of a mid-year check in for our administrative team. So you want to do just a brief description of that for the board?
Yeah, you'll see something, those of you guys who've been around for a while, we always had a mid-year report, our G P I's. It's going to be maybe a shortened version of that where all of the division directors are going to report out the progress that they've made in their plan for work for second semester, kind of a little formative assessment of sorts of where they are on the G P I's. So you should see that full report during the February board meeting.
And then we also wanted to share with you that this will be the last meeting with Pia. Pia has accepted position as an admin assistant at D one thirteen, where my kids went to school. But it's going to be working in their C S B O office, which Pia has been working on her C S B O for the last couple of years and is going to be doing work more aligned to her passions. So thank you, Pia, for all of your amazing work. You have certainly raised the bar and have big shoes to fill, so we appreciate you.
I've really appreciated everything that Stevenson has done and then the board as well. I've really enjoyed getting to know all of you, so thank you.
We'll miss you.
We're going to miss you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, congratulations, super exciting.
Thank you.
And then we'll, someday we'll see you as a C S B O downtown at our November.
That sounds good.
Yeah, November meetings. So, all right, I think that's it. Wendy? Okay, this.
Could I please get a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You know, every year, Anne loves to make coffee for the board, so pass that down. This is from Anne. And I think Amy, you've.
Are you kicking them off? Eric's throwing towels at you?
Yeah, it's like at the cub games, the guy throwing the nuts.